All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is Chad Leonard, Executive Director of Community Voters Coalition. This is Vote Prep 2024 Leon County. The whole point of this is to put information out there and to give folks information on local races and on candidates for local races and the issues and how they feel about those issues. This is just another way to educate the public so we can all make informed, so we can all make informed decisions when it comes to the ballot box. So what I will do is I just introduce myself, Chad Leonard, for Community Voters Coalition. I am going to turn it over to Trish Neely to introduce herself, then Genesis, and then Frank and Carlos.
Okay. Hi Sheila, my name is Trish Neely and I'm the President of Tallahassee Local Chapter of the League of Women Voters and delighted to see you here and help we answer all of your questions.
Great. Okay, thanks. All right. Go ahead Genesis.
Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening rather, Genesis Robinson. I am the interim Executive Director for Equal Ground Education Fund. Excited to be here to talk more about the civic engagement process and how we prepare for the upcoming election.
All right, Frank, you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir. My name is Frank Peterman III. I am Director of Community Outreach for Community Voters Coalition and happy to be here tonight to discuss these elections.
All right, good afternoon. Well, good afternoon and good evening to all. Carlos Nathan, the Director of Strategic Partnerships for Community Voters Coalition and happy to be here and ready to talk to you all about elections and some of these candidate races.
All right. All right, so some things that we're going to go over. We just went over the introductions. I gave you the overview of what this is for. Once again, it's being recorded so people can come back to it. This is the first, this is the first session of three. We'll be meeting next weekend and a week after that as we prepare for the primary election. That's going to be on August 20th. So we're going to go over Leon County Commission at Large Group One, Leon County Commission District Four, Leon County Judge Seat Four. Now, there are other local races that are happening. We didn't cover those because a lot of them, folks are running unopposed. And so we wanted to cover those who have actual multiple candidates who are, who we can compare to one another. But if you have any questions about any other races, then feel free to bring those up and we'll, we'll do our best to, we'll do our best to address those. So now I'm going to take it or give it back over to Trish Neely because one of the things that we'll be doing from time to time is sharing our screen and using Vote 411. And so Trish is going to explain to us about what Vote 411 is and how to use it and all of those things. So I'm actually going to change the share to my screen. Let's see. Share, then I'll change as I give it over to Trish.
And you know where it is, right? It's vote411.org.
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, while Chad is doing that, let me just go ahead and, and speak just a minute or two about the league. For those who don't know, the mission of the League of Women Voters is to empower voters and defend democracy. And we actually play two distinct roles. We advocate and lobby on issues that are of interest to our communities. We do not follow partisan politics or platforms. It's strictly issues for us. So that's one role we play. The other role that we play outside of advocacy and lobbying is that we are an education fund. And we, in fact, we built Vote 411 around our desire to expand our education approach. And it's a nationwide platform that is funded as well as operated exclusively by the League of Women Voters of the United States Education Fund. So I just wanted to make sure that it's very clear that anything that you see on vote411.org is all nonpartisan educational information that's designed to make sure the electorate can make an informed decision about voting. So with that, let me just kind of go through what you will see if you go to Vote 411. So you'll have the ability to register to vote. And Chad, you don't need to go through any of these links. You'll have the ability to register to vote on here. And oftentimes, when you, when you go to register to vote, you will put in certain information about yourself and then you may be directed to your Supervisor of Elections Office. And here in Tallahassee, we are so blessed to have Mark Early as, as our Supervisor of Elections, who has an incredible website that, that our voters can go to and be able to register extremely easy. You can also off of Vote 411, check your registration. So at any time you can go out, check your registration. There's also information out there that will tell you, based on any laws that may have been passed, if there's anything about your registration that you may want to look at or update, those types of things. And then, of course, you can find what's on your ballot. And this is, this is what Chad and his team spent the majority of their time on over the past month getting ready for this, for this session, is looking at what is on your ballot. So do you want me to end there and then you can kind of go back to what's on the ballot at a later time? Or how do you want? Okay, all right.
Yep, that's fine. Okay. Trish, thank you so much. And like, like we said, we'll be going back to Vote 411 when it comes time to do a deep dive in conjunction with the websites and everything for some of the candidates. So right now, I'm going to switch the screen again. And I'm going to turn it over to Carlos. So well, let me say for each of the candidates, what we'll be doing is we'll be having an overview of their positions. Genesis is going to explain a little bit about the impact of those positions and how they affect the community. And then Carlos is going to go over just some details of the candidates, kind of like their backgrounds and things of that nature. So we can, we can have a better idea of who we're dealing with and there'll be opportunity to ask questions as we, as we go through all of that. So. All right, Carlos, it's on you. Let me know when you want me to open those links for you.
Oh, I thought Genesis was going to give like an introduction to each other. You know, you're good, man. You're good.
I just said that. Go ahead Genesis.
Yes, so for the commission, you know, you have various positions that serve on the county commission. They are responsible for all of the legislative authority provided by the Home Rule Charter. So essentially what that means is when it comes to creating policies and procedures that govern Leon County and are in play, you know, they are responsible for creating those policies and those laws. They exercise all of the powers and duties authorized by general law or special law approved by the electorate. So essentially what that means is sometimes, you know, the, the authority, well, in most times, the authority given to a county commission is authorized by the charter or, you know, the, the state. But there are instances in which voters may vote on a particular ordinance or a particular issue that is now binding and the commission is responsible for adhering to that. So when we talk about, or special law approved by the electorate, that is typically what we're talking about, some type of referendum or something that voters have given the commission a mandate to adhere to. When we talk about administrative code, you know, they are adopting administrative code. That is a standard in which the, the employees and the other parts of the county must adhere to. They are to appoint and remove the county administrator. So this is important as well as with the county attorney. So in local government, both the city and the municipal, so meaning this, the city and the county level, you know, one of the things that is important is that they hire someone to take care of the day-to-day of the operation of the county. Obviously, you know, the commissioners don't have the time to take care of every single aspect. And so you have a, a government structure in which you have an accounting administrator or a county manager. It may be called in some areas who's responsible for that day-to-day operation. And so, you know, through a vote of the commission, they have the power and authority to hire both the county administrator or county manager as well as the county attorney. And then lastly, they conduct performance appraisals of the county administrator and county attorney, at least annually. So, you know, because those positions are not elected, it is a responsibility of our elected leaders to hold those people accountable, right? And so as voters, we sort of instill in them responsibility to make sure that they're doing their job accurately and in the best interest of voters. And then, you know, you have some other things such as fixed compensation for the county administrator and county attorney, you know, setting the salary package and things like that, enact the Code of Ethics by ordinance, consider and vote on proposed ordinances initiated by citizen petition. So, you know, anything that you desire to become law or something that you think should, you know, go into effect in the county, they have to take that up and it, you know, consider it amongst themselves. And sometimes it may require a majority vote, a simple majority vote. Sometimes it may require a super majority vote. And so various issues that come up, they have to consider. And then lastly, call referendums on proposed ordinances when required. So those are some of the duties that are outlined within the county commission. And, you know, some of the things that they're responsible for doing. So just to recap, you have the legislative responsibilities, that's setting policy. You have the administrative responsibilities, that's hiring certain people to lead in certain functions and aspects. You have the community engagement, which is, you know, interacting and being a part of the community to know and understand what the issues are. And that's, you know, for the most part, the responsibilities of county commissioners.
I thank you so much, Genesis. We appreciate that. And we, we know that's why we always say that our, our local races have just as much impact, if not more, as our national races going on. So thank you for, thank you for outlining that for us. Carlos, I am going to hand it over to you.
All right. Thank you, sir. So, and also thank you, Genesis, for what a county commissioner does and how much responsibility they actually have when it comes to government in the county area that it represent. And so the first race that we will discuss will be the at-large seat, which at-large means the entire county. The district, so normally with some certain county commissioner meeting, I'm sorry, certain county commissioners, they are broken up within districts of the county, which we'll discuss in the next election. But the first one, but at-large means that everyone in the county will have a vote. So you will see the next two candidates on your ballot on August 20th. And so the first that we have is Carolyn Cummings, who is the current for Leon County. She was elected back in 2020 and so she is coming again before the voters. And so Chad, if you could, go to the first link that I sent you.
Yep.
And although she does not have a website, you can go to the, as we'll show you on the, on the screen, the county commissioner's website and it will give you a bio of who she is. She is a, an attorney in town and you'll see kind of the highlights of what she's done throughout her term as county commissioner, while she asks you all to send her, send her back to Tallahassee to represent the voters of Leon County. Also the contact information for her office, if you need reach her for any constituent issues. And again, like I say, her history. The second candidate for this race is David T. Hawkins, who is a local member of the Leon County, who was a resident of Leon County. He has a very intensive background that you can read through. He's a former state employee. He's been in Tallahassee for 53 years. And then if you scroll down to the bottom of his website, you will find his issue. Yes, his campaign platform. If you could click that link, my friend. And you, his plans and his, and all the things he believes in and what he plans on accomplishing throughout, or if he's elected to the county commissioner seat.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add something here. He was also, hey, I, I don't, I don't know if you can see the name of his website here, but he, he also ran for District Five in 2020 unsuccessfully. It, it doesn't seem like any of his, any of his platform has changed. I know he's just going from his Facebook and all those things. He's, he's real big on wasteful spending and, and, and crime. So he doesn't, as far as solutions go, as far as solutions go, I'm not sure if anything has changed substantially for him from 2020. But that, you know, he has this website, but we, unfortunately, we don't have a website to go through for Carolyn D. Cummings. But if you go on Vote 411 and look at it, they have some of the answers to the questions that they both answered, which would help. And as, as Trish stated, you can, you can compare them and contrast them in any way that would make sense to you.
All right. Thank you for that, Chad. All right. And so next we will go to Commissioner's Seat Four, which this seat, or this district represents the northeast side of town. So this is your Calan, Brathville, and the non-incorporated areas of Leon County, such as your, well, the only area I can think of that's not incorporated out here is McSicki. So you have like the rural area and the ever-growing urban sprawl that is Brathville as well. And so the first candidate is the current county commissioner, Brian Welch. And he actually has a website of the things that he's not only accomplished, but the other things that he will continue to support and work if elected, if re-elected to that seat again. And so Chad, if you could bring up his website for us, please.
Yep. One second. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
And so if you scroll down, you could see, and each link will take you to all the different things that he has not only worked on and he is currently working towards. And so this one here is the Northeast Park that the county approved this past, this past year that will essentially expand the economic development and vitality for Leon County in the northeast area.
And Carlos, tell me which ones you want me to click on. I know we don't have enough time to go over all of them.
Yeah, no, no, again, I will just let you know that you can click on them so we can, so you can see in more, in more detail. And so, yeah, you continue scrolling down. Of course, each website that you go to will have a meet the candidate and an introduction to them. And then again, other thing, other issues that he continues to support. And always a link to donate, but again, we will not encourage you to donate, but we'll just encourage you to continue to look at issues and reach out to the candidates themselves. His, the other candidate in that race is Dr. Isaac Montilla. He is a chiropractor who has a practice on the northeast side of town. Yes, and as you can tell, if you scroll down his, there's an introduction to who he is and, you know, history of his time in Tallahassee. And then some of the organizations and his involvement within the community. But his website doesn't necessarily have any real issues that he is, he wants to address. He just is letting you know that he's a committee, a committee, a community man, a community member and a family man who is active. So again, if you have a chance to see him in person or attend Committee Candidate Forum, by all means, please listen and ask the questions on who he is and what he wants to do within this committee. Once, sorry, I keep saying committee, in this community, once he's elected. And with that, I will turn it back over to Chad.
Hey Chad, I just put the YouTube link into chat so that anyone who wants to go out and look at the candidate forums that were a partnership between the League of Women Voters, Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU, they can go there and find any of the candidate forums.
Sorry about that. Four years of working Zoom and I still do that. So, so we're going to talk more about the seat, the next seat, which, let me go through some, Carlos, so let's go through those. So we'll be talking about the, the judge seat next. And so Genesis is going to, once again, give us an idea of what we can expect from them, kind of how, how we should judge them. That's another reason we're doing the responsibilities. So we can know how we're judging folks and we don't expect them to do things that's not in their purview in vote or not vote for them based on unrealistic expectations or misunderstanding of what, what their responsibilities are. So Genesis, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, county judges, well, judges in, in general are unique in the sense that one of the things that when, as you're doing your research on judges, you won't find a lot of positions on various issues. And so that's very important to understand because they're bound by law from disclosing certain political stances on certain issues and things like that. So you won't find a whole lot around where they stand on issues. And so one of the best ways to understand, you know, how a judge may leave from the bench is really to look at previous case law, previous decisions that they may have decided on. Obviously, understanding who supports them, I think, can give you a little bit of insight as to what you can count on from a judge. But county judges are very different from circuit judges and it's important that folks make that distinction. County judges typically hear misdemeanor cases. They don't hear felony cases generally. This is really reserved to the county judges. You have civil suits that are less than $50,000, small claims court, county ordinance violation. So we talked about earlier, right? To understand how it all connects together. If the county commission passes an ordinance and someone is, you know, accused of violating that ordinance, it would go before a county judge to make a determination on who has violated, who has not violated. You have a lot of landlord and tenant actions. So, you know, when you are dealing with matters related to housing and trying to get out a tenant and things like that, those are some of the things that fall within the purview of county judges. In addition to traffic court, that was left off of the, the slide, but traffic court is another thing that goes before county judges. Slide. Or do you have a next slide? Okay. Yeah. So in addition to that, judges are responsible for qualifying jurors. I know everyone doesn't like to serve jury duty, but, you know, it's something that we all have to do as our civic duty. And so they ensure that they have proper juries to, to seat, you know, for various cases. They hold a first hearing. So if someone is arrested, typically the judge that you would see is a county judge because they have the authority to sort of enforce the, the, the rules and laws of that local jurisdiction. And so that will be your first, you know, I guess, opportunity to have a, to, to, to be heard in the judicial system as by your first appearance with a county judge. And then they can, if needed, act in the capacity of circuit judges as well.
All right. Thank you so much, Genesis, for breaking that down for us. Then I'm going to give it over to Frank. Then Frank, I'm going to make you a host so you can share your screen.
Thank you, sir. So we're going to talk a little bit about the Leon County Judge Dean Four. The three candidates are Robert Churchill, LaShawn Riggins, and Sidney Brown. Just a little bit preliminary before we kind of get into some of their website. Like, like Genesis said, as far as judges, they can't really disclose their positions. That's, that's a legal issue. But you really have to look at like, what kind of law have they worked on? Have they done pro bono work? Do they do tenant landlord issues, things of that nature? And that kind of gives you a better sense as far as kind of how they may act as a judge. So I'm going to go to some of their websites and give you a little better insight on the different judge candidates that we have for seat four. So we'll start with Robert Churchill. And so he is, was admitted to the Florida bar in 2002. Got his law degree from Florida State University as well as his bachelor's. He's the founder and managing partner of his own law group here in Tallahassee, St. Petersburg, and Thomasville. I'm not going to read through all of this, but just a quick synopsis. Most of his background is in civil law, from what I've seen. I know he's done also some community advocacy. But like I said, mostly civil. He's done a lot of pro bono work in the community. And so that's something he kind of leans on as a candidate. And so that's important to note. When you think about it, you're asking them to do, that, that is his focus, not to say that he couldn't look at other cases and make a good determination. But that's just something important to know, just, and just something to be aware of. I talked about volunteering and being in the community, but this is kind of the extent of the site. And I'll kind of like leave it to you all to make your own determination as to whether he is worthy of your vote. The next website we'll go through is Sidney Brown. She is also running for Judge Seat Four. Now, she is more so on the criminal side. She's done a lot more work on that side. They've both done some pro bono, Sidney and Robert. But like I said, more so on the criminal side. Excuse me. She also graduated from FSU College of Law. Done mostly criminal. She's done some pro bono as well. I did see on her website where she I did see on her website where she talks about uh doing. More pro bono work here lately, uh particularly around landlord tenant issues. Um so that's something just to be aware of. Um that's something that attorneys do. Um just as an act of goodwill, they offer their services to the community sometimes in different issues. Uh so tha- that's a good thing. That's obviously something you want to somebody that's gonna be representing people. Um now, I was not able to find a website for LaShawn Riggins. Um spent most of today trying to find that. Um if somebody else can find it. And you post it great, but I wasn't able to find one. Um I do appreciate that Trish shared the uh debate that was held by WFSU League Women Voters. Uh and ties to Democrat. I think that was probably the most insightful. Um thing that I got from this race. You really kind of got a chance to hear how everybody felt. Uh about the issues or things that they may encounter in that role as a judge here in Leon County. Uh so I I would, I would suggest anybody to go take a look at that and see kind of how the folks. Would be voting, or not voting, judging uh based on issues or cases that came before them. Um so that that's pretty much it. I wish I had more to offer. Um but yeah, oh, the last thing I'll say is I know that uh LaShawn Riggins has done both criminal and civil. Um so that's just something to keep in mind. We'll pass it back to Chad, I believe.
There we go. Sorry about that. Um give me one second because. I believe Vote Four One One has her website on for Mrs. Riggins, and that's why we love. Um that's why we love Vote Four One One.
I'm not sure I saw her website out there, but. I mean, not a burrowed down deep enough.
Yes, I could be mistaken as well. There we go. Uh I'm gonna share my screen so we can see it. I think it her hers is a lot like Frank said as well, um like the others. Just really more so talking about their qualifications. This is just. Frank, did you want to talk now that we got the website up or?
Yeah, I didn't, I can kind of go through it. Um. So LaShawn Riggins, um I know she's the deputy county attorney. Um that is something I I did not mention. Uh she's a graduate of Florida Coastal School of Law. Um. And like I said, she's a deputy county attorney. Uh she's been practicing law for seventeen years, so. All three candidates have uh quite extensive experience practicing law here. Um. Uh one thing I will say, and this may be a personal anecdote. Um I have, out of the three candidates, I I would say I think LaShawn Riggins and and Sidney Brown are probably been more visible. Uh I haven't really, I know I've seen a few events from both of them. More so LaShawn, uh just being more accessible to voters. I don't know how important that is to folks, but just throwing that out here. But um I guess I'm not gonna read the website, but you can kind of see um she's worked on the Florida Professional Ethics Committee. Uh she talks about kind of championing. Certain rights, making sure that the the system has integrity and um. She's making sure that uh it seems like she wants to even the playing field, or or she feels that that's an issue that needs to be brought to the forefront. Um so if that's what you're looking for in a candidate, she may be the person for you. Is there anything else you think we should kind of cover on the candidates before we move on?
Um no, I think I think we're good as far as the judges, you know, there's not a lot of meat on the bone. Um. With them, but I think what we have, you know, it makes sense, and I I appreciate you for for. Getting all this uh information together. I think um. Trish, I know Trish wanted to go back to what's on your ballot on Vote Four One One, so we can kind of. Talk about that um a little bit more as well. Is that okay, Trish?
Yeah, please. That would be great. So when you first log on to Vote Four One One, you get a screen that looks like this. And maybe it's just a personal preference, but. I I find that navigating Vote Four One One is a whole lot easier. On my smartphone than what it is on the website. But be that as it may. So um. If you, yeah, go in there, find what's on your ballot. Sorry, I can't pull this up myself. No. Um. So one of one of the first things that that is very important to do. Is to enter in your street address and your zip code. Keeping in mind that Vote Four One One is a nationwide application. So so you don't want to be looking at everybody. You want to focus in on Tallahassee. So um you can either enter mine in, or um if you would go ahead and put your own in there. You want to do mine?
You're not so.
Okay. And then um.
Wait, show districts or get?
Show districts.
Okay.
Whoops. Let me see, scroll up, let me make sure. So. So these are all the districts that are available in in our area. Um let's look at what I think would be important is to. To look at what is available under the race that um. What was our at-large county commissioner race?
Uh that was uh seat one. Yeah, the at-large seat one.
Yeah, let's let's go to that one and I can I can show where the information is available.
You want to confirm?
Yeah. Okay, so when you get to this section, one of the things that I like to do. Is it it will, it is going to show you information based on your party. But if you say all parties, it will show you information on everybody that the league collected. So let's leave it on all parties.
Okay.
And then save and view races. So it was, what did, what did you say it was? City Commission seat one?
At at-large include one, I'm sorry. Yep.
Okay. All right, so here are the candidates. If you select. View answers on both of them. You'll be able to compare what they said. Now scroll down. So here's some basic information about both. Their email address, their website. And then these are questions that the league asks of. These candidates, and you see what their answers are. So why are you running for this position? In what ways can Leon County reduce its carbon footprint? And then you can compare both of their responses. Are the ethics rules um. Appropriate, especially regarding regulations. If not, what would you recommend? And you can see what their answers were to those. So there's um, there's a good amount of information in there. Um and then um, yeah. So this is, this is one of the attributes that Vote Four One One has that. Many voters really find helpful. I will say though that. It's based on um the information that we get back from candidates. Most candidates do respond, and I will tell you that um. When it's out here on um on Vote Four One One. Whatever the candidate responded, we take their response and put it in here verbatim. So you know, whatever they said is exactly what you're gonna see here. There's, we didn't do any improvising on the text. So I think that's important to know as well. And when I mentioned that um, you know, what's in here is only as good as what the candidates respond. Um we did not get either candidate in the. I think it was District Four to respond.
Yeah.
To to the questionnaire. So you know, um it's unfortunate. Um at least we do have them both on uh on the video because they both attended the candidate forum, so. Um and and again, I put that in the, I put that in chat, so. Um for anybody who wants to go out and and look at those videos, they're out there.
Trish, thank you so much. Um I know that this is, this site is very, very valuable. I know that League of Women Voters has been doing. This type of work in so many um in so many different ways for so long, and it's just great to see it being done um like this and. You know, keeping up with the times and and making sure that folks have access no matter where they are. So um we really appreciate you all, appreciate you all. Uh for creating the site, we'll we'll make sure folks are using it and make sure folks are getting to it. Um as we go along. Um I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And see if there are any questions um or if there's anything that we didn't cover. That someone um had some questions on or had so had something to add.
Um Chad, could I just say that um uh not everybody knows how to get to chat. Um you may want to add the YouTube um. The way to get to YouTube to be able to see those uh directly on your screen for folks.
Okay, uh let me go ahead to. Go ahead to the link that you um that you sent.
So do you see it out there?
Yep, I see it. Um.
So there are, there are a couple of ways to find those videos. This particular link here is the easiest. It's the Tallahassee Democrats website. And what they've done is they've taken all of the candidate forums and grouped them together. So it's easy to find on their YouTube channel. Yep, there they are. So there's, if you scroll down to the next one, it says created playlist, and I think that particular one plays them all. If you view the full playlist, you'll see every one of the candidate forums that we did this year. And and just as a reminder that this is, these are the, this is a primary, we will also be doing. Candidate forums for the general election as well. And it's been a great partnership to have Tallahassee Democrat and WFSU Media. Because for many people, they can't attend a candidate forum. So we do it livestreamed, but then they are also all recorded so that they are out there for anybody to go out and look at. And so far, I think Tallahassee Democrats said they've got about thirty-five hundred hits. From people going out and and looking at the videos. So that's, that's great, you know, for for our electorate. To be able to to see what the candidates have to say.
Yeah, no, that's um, that's amazing. Um and we'll, we'll be sure to push those out, like I said. On our stuff as well, so folks can go back and um go back and take a look at it. I know I, I know I enjoy going through it when I was getting things together, um getting the transcript together as well. Um. Uh are there any questions? Uh does anybody uh have any questions? Uh Miss Sheila or Farana? If not, I I I just, we understand, but. Uh we'd love to address some things if we if we missed over, missed something or glossed over anything.
No, I don't have any question, but this has been very informative.
Oh, good.
Oh, thanks so much, Michelle. We 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 appreciate you. Um we appreciate you joining us. Um if that is all, um once again, uh the next election will be August twentieth. Um that is gonna be the primary election. The uh early vote starts on uh August tenth. Uh and we'll go all the way to the eighteenth. Um. So uh that is where we are, and uh once again, join us next week. Uh we'll be talking about the um Tallahassee City Commission seats. Uh that are gonna be up, uh and then I'm gonna hand over to Genesis. Genesis had a word.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one quick thing. Um in reference to the uh and forgive me if I missed this, I had to step away for a second. But in reference to the primary election, I just want to remind folks that Florida is a closed primary state. And so uh when you go to vote in August. Uh uh you will get a ballot that reflects your political party if you have selected one. And so if you are NPA affiliated, um you will not be able to vote in partisan elections. And so just understand that if you hear names in the community and you say, hey, why isn't this person on my ballot? That is the reason why Florida is a closed primary state. So in nonpartisan races such as county commission. Uh school board, mayor, you know, things like that, you 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 will be fine. But in partisan races, um understand that that may cause your ballot to look a lot differently. And so I just wanted to flag that for folks uh as we go into this uh election.
Thanks so much, Genesis. Appreciate, appreciate that reminder, because a lot of people don't know that. Uh and if they do know, they forget it. Um so um, once again, uh thank you all so much uh for being here. This is. Uh we'll post this on our YouTube and uh so we'll, I'll send the um. I'll send the link out once it's posted uh back through all the emails that were sent for the registration. So. We're still accepting registrations. We still want to get people here for next week and a week after that, uh because we want people prepared and to be informed. So uh thank you so much, and you all have a great night.
Have a good night.
Good night.